My brother, Leo, came home for our father's funeral wearing a Chicago suit and a smile that didn't reach his eyes. He thought he was returning to sell off our family's legacy, to chop it up into pieces for some real estate deal. He thought the story of Ramirez Timber would end with a checkbook and a handshake. He had no idea our father's final secret, his real will, wasn't written on paper. It was built into the very heart of this town, and I was about to find it. The air in the mill is thick with the smell of damp pine and machine oil. The roar of a planer echoes through the cavernous space, a sound that has been the heartbeat of Port Blossom for three generations. I stand in the middle of it all, dressed in my worn flannel shirt and faded jeans. My dark hair is pulled back in a messy bun, loose strands catching the sawdust that glitters like gold dust in the industrial lights. I don't have to shout, I just raise a hand. And Hank, an older worker who has been here since my father was a boy, kills the machine. The sudden silence is deafening. All that's left is the sad rhythm of the rain on the tin roof. Everything okay, Elena? Hank's voice is low and respectful. Yeah, Hank, I reply, my voice a little hoarse with fatigue. Just, quiet for a minute. He arrives today. Hank doesn't need to ask who, he, is. The whole town knows. He nods, his eyes etched with a mixture of sympathy and worry. I look around the mill. Every scar on the concrete floor, every gouge in the massive oak support beams, tells a story. It's where my grandfather lost a finger, where my father taught me to tell cedar from fir just by the scent. This isn't a business, it's a living family tree. For five years, since Dad got sick, this place has been my entire world. I'd learned its rhythms, its groans, its sighs, it breathed, and I breathed with it. To my brother, it was just an asset on a spreadsheet, an old, dusty problem in a town he couldn't wait to leave behind. A ridiculously clean, black Tesla glides down the main street of Port Blossom. Its tires crunch softly on the gravel, a foreign sound among the town's muddy, beat-up pickup trucks. The car stops in front of the mill. The door opens and Leo steps out. He wears a perfectly tailored suit, his Italian leather shoes looking absurd on the muddy ground. Following him is Chloe Sterling, his fiancée, tall and elegant in a camel-colored coat. Her sharp eyes scanning everything with a cool, appraising gaze. I walk out of the mill, my arms crossed over my chest. Leo's hug is awkward and brief, a required formality. Ellie, he says, you look tired. I shrug, a faint smile on my lips. Running a mill will do that to you. You look exactly the same. He laughs, but it doesn't touch his eyes. The city keeps you sharp. This is Chloe. Chloe extends a soft, manicured hand. Her handshake is firm, calculated. Elena, I've heard so much about you, and this place, it has such incredible, rustic potential. Rustic potential, the words of a real estate developer. A chill runs down my spine. I look into Chloe's eyes and see the reflection of glass and steel condominiums. The funeral is simple and solemn. Nearly the entire town is there. They've come not just for my father, but for the mill, their lifeline. I sit in the front pew, feeling the weight of their gazes, knowing they are looking to me for reassurance. Leo delivers a eulogy, he talks about childhood memories, about business lessons. His words are polished, rehearsed, but they lack warmth. It sounds more like a boardroom presentation than a farewell to a father. Arthur Vance, the family lawyer, a man with kind eyes and a warm handshake, sits beside me. He says nothing, just places a comforting hand on my shoulder, a simple gesture that holds a history of loyalty. Afterward, in the church hall, as the townspeople share casseroles and old stories. I see Leo and Chloe in a corner. Chloe is speaking in a low voice, her hands making abstract shapes in the air. Sketching a future I don't want to imagine. Leo listens, nodding, his eyes scanning the familiar faces of our neighbors. Not with affection, but as if he's counting obstacles. He wasn't seeing friends or neighbors. He was seeing liabilities, old timers with pensions, families who had worked on our land for generations. To him, they weren't people, they were line items in the way of his glorious, debt-free future. That night, as the rain fell on the roof of the house we grew up in, I knew the funeral was just the beginning. The real battle for our father's soul was about to start. The day after the funeral, the three of us sat in our father's study with Arthur Vance. The room smelled of old books and pipe tobacco, a scent so familiar it felt like a ghost in the air. Rain streamed down the windowpanes, blurring the world outside into a watercolor of gray and green. Arthur, looking more tired than I'd ever seen him, opened his worn leather briefcase and pulled out a single, crisp envelope. The ticking of the grandfather clock in the hall seemed to grow louder with every passing second. The will is quite straightforward, Arthur said, his voice gentle. He cleared his throat and read from the document. To my beloved children, Elena and Leo Ramirez, I leave my entire estate, including full ownership of Ramirez Timber and its associated lands, to be shared equally between them as partners. He paused, letting the words settle. That's the primary clause. The rest is standard legal language. Shared equally, as partners. A knot of anxiety I hadn't known I was holding began to loosen. It was simple, it was fair. I glanced at Leo, expecting to see relief, but his expression was unreadable, almost impatient. Chloe, sitting beside him, offered a small, polished smile. That evening, I insisted on a family dinner. It felt wrong to let the quiet of the house be consumed by grief alone. I made Dad's favorite, pot roast, slow-cooked for hours. The familiar aroma filled the kitchen, but it didn't feel comforting. It felt like a memory I was trying too hard to hold on to. We sat at the heavy oak table my grandfather had built. For a few minutes, the only sounds were the clinking of silverware and the incessant rain. Then Leo set down his fork, dabbing his mouth with a napkin with practiced precision. Well, he began, his voice smooth and confident. Now that the legalities are out of the way, I think we should talk about the future. I looked up, a warning bell going off in my head. The future of the mill is the same as its past. Leo, we keep it running, he chuckled, a condescending sound that set my teeth on edge. Ellie, be realistic, this place is a relic. It's barely breaking even. Dad kept it alive through sheer sentimentality, but we have to be smarter. We have an opportunity here, a real one. Chloe leaned forward, her eyes gleaming. What Leo means is that we have a chance to build something that truly honors your father's legacy. A legacy project that brings prosperity to this entire area. I stared at them, the piece of roast in my mouth suddenly tasting like ash. What are you talking about? Leo took a deep breath, his salesman smile clicking into place. Chloe's firm is prepared to make a very generous offer for the land. We're talking eight figures. They want to develop it. A high-end, eco-luxury resort, think private cabins, a spa, farm-to-table restaurant, it would create hundreds of jobs. Put Port Blossom on the map. The fork slipped from my fingers, clattering onto the plate. The sound was like a gunshot in the quiet room. My blood ran cold. They hadn't just thought about this, they had planned it. The eulogy, the sad smiles, the shared memories, it was all a performance. A prelude to this. Sell, my voice was barely a whisper. You want to sell Dad's mill? Our home? It's not a home, it's a business asset, Leo corrected, his tone becoming sharper, and a failing one at that. I have debts, Ellie, serious ones. This isn't just an opportunity, it's a lifeline. This deal clears my slate and sets you up for life. You'd never have to worry about payroll or leaky roofs or another damn thing ever again. His words were meant to sound logical, caring even, but all I could hear was the screech of saws being dismantled. The silence of a town losing its heart. I saw Hank's worried face, the faces of all the men and women who depended on us. Who had trusted my father, and who were now trusting me. No, I said, my voice finding its strength. Absolutely not. Chloe's smile tightened. Elena, perhaps you're not seeing the bigger picture. The bigger picture? I pushed my chair back, the legs scraping harshly against the wood floor. I am the only one who is seeing the bigger picture. This isn't just about land or money. It's about people, it's about a promise our family made to this town a hundred years ago. Promises don't pay off student loans from an MBA. Ellie, Leo shot back, his composure finally cracking. Promises don't keep the lights on in a Chicago high-rise. Dad was a great man, but he was stuck in the past. It's our job to be smarter, it's what he would have wanted. He used our father's memory as a weapon, and in that moment, something inside me shattered and was replaced by a cold, hard resolve. I looked from my brother's desperate, selfish face to his fiancée's predatory ambition. They weren't partners, they were vultures, circling what they thought was a dying animal. But I was still here, and I would not let them tear it apart. The silence that fell over the dinner table was a cold, heavy thing. It followed us out of the dining room and into the rest of the house, seeping into the floorboards and clinging to the curtains. That night, I lay in my childhood bed, listening to the rain and the creaks of the old house. But all I could hear were Leo's words, echoing over and over. A business asset, stuck in the past, it's what he would have wanted. Sleep was a distant country I had no hope of visiting. The betrayal was a sharp, physical ache in my chest. He hadn't just proposed a business transaction, he had tried to rewrite our father's entire life. Reframing his love and loyalty as a foolish, sentimental weakness. The next few days were a quiet, brutal siege. Leo, sensing my resolve, shifted his tactics. He abandoned the open-ended proposals and came armed with data. One morning, he cornered me in the kitchen, spreading a sheaf of spreadsheets across the table while I was trying to drink my coffee. Just look at the numbers. Ellie, he said, his tone infuriatingly patient, as if explaining a simple math problem to a child. He pointed a manicured finger at columns of red ink. Projected timber prices are flat. Maintenance on the heavy equipment is a killer. The property taxes alone, we're bleeding out, slowly, maybe, but we are. When that didn't work, he tried guilt, he'd find me in the living room in the evening, sighing as he looked out the window. I know you think I'm a monster, he'd say, his voice low and confessional. But I'm drowning, the MBA, a few bad investments, I'm in a hole so deep I can't see the sky. This isn't just for me, it's for you, too, to free you from this, this burden. He made it sound like a mercy killing. Chloe was his silent, ever-present reinforcement, always appearing with a sympathetic smile and a perfectly timed question. Wouldn't it be nice to finally travel, Elena, to not have to worry about apparel every Friday? They were a team, polished and relentless. Every word was designed to make me feel small, old-fashioned, and irrational. They painted a picture of a dying town and a dying business. And I was the foolish sentimentalist standing in the way of a bright, logical future. The worst part was, a small, tired piece of me almost believed them. The numbers on his spreadsheets were real, the mill was a struggle, the town was hurting. Doubt began to creep in, a cold fog at the edges of my anger. That's when I retreated to my father's office. It was the one room in the house Leo and Chloe seemed to avoid. As if his presence still lingered too strongly within its wood-paneled walls. I closed the heavy oak door, shutting out their quiet campaign, and sank into his worn leather chair. It still held the faint imprint of his body, the scent of his pipe tobacco still embedded in the fabric. I wasn't looking for a weapon yet, I was looking for him, for some piece of his strength, his certainty. I started with the official ledgers, the same ones Leo had used for his spreadsheets. For hours, I traced the columns of income and expenditures, my hopes sinking with every page. He was right, on paper, it looked bleak, the margins were razor-thin. A bad winter or a piece of broken machinery could easily push us into the red for good. My anxiety grew, a knot tightening in my stomach. Was I wrong? Was I just holding on to a ghost at the expense of our future? Frustrated, I pushed the ledgers aside and pulled my father's personal journals from the bookshelf. There were dozens of them, stretching back thirty years. These weren't business logs, they were filled with his thoughts, his strong, deliberate script charting the seasons. The town gossip, the progress on his whittling projects. In his final years, his handwriting had started to tremble, but the words were no less clear. I spent an entire day reading, losing myself in his quiet, steady view of the world. And then I found it, tucked between an entry about a migrating flock of geese and a note about a leak in the church roof. Was a strange, out-of-place sentence, the clock face sees all. A town's time is measured in generations, not dollars. It was odd, poetic, but I dismissed it as just one of Dad's philosophical musings. I kept reading. A few weeks later, another one, met with Arthur. Stewardship is a heavier wood than ownership. Leo will never understand that. A prickle of unease ran up my spine. It felt like a message, a warning. I got up and pulled the financial ledgers back onto the desk, opening one from that same year. I cross-referenced the date of the journal entry, and there it was, an entry I'd glanced over before. One that was repeated every quarter, going back decades, a significant withdrawal, always for the same amount. Labeled simply, Port Blossom Community Trust. It was a huge expense, one that single-handedly made the mill's profits look so slim. Who was this trust, what was it for? It wasn't a vendor or a supplier. It was a massive, regular payment that made no business sense at all. I flipped through the journals again, my heart starting to pound. Every cryptic entry about legacy, about time, about stewardship, they all seem to cluster around the dates of these payments. I sat back in the deep leather chair, the dim office light glinting off the dusty spines of the books. Leo's spreadsheets hadn't been a lie, but they were a deception. He had only shown me the result, not the reason. Our father hadn't been running a failing business, he had been intentionally diverting its profits. For decades, into a secret trust, the note about the clock tower, Arthur's name, the steady flow of money into a fund I'd never heard of. It made no sense, and that's why I knew it meant everything. The drive to Arthur Vance's office was a short one, but the main street of Port Blossom felt different now. I saw the peeling paint on the storefronts, the "for lease" signs in the windows of the old diner. The weary faces of the people I'd known my whole life. For the first time, I could see the town through Leo's eyes, not as a home, but as a problem to be solved, a failure to be erased. The thought hardened my resolve. He was wrong, this place wasn't a failure, it was fighting. And so was I. Arthur's office was on the second floor of the oldest brick building in town, right above the bakery. The scent of yeast and cinnamon followed me up the creaking wooden staircase. His door, with its frosted glass and hand-painted gold lettering, hadn't changed since I was a little girl coming here for lollipops after my father's meetings. Inside, the world slowed down, the only sounds were the ticking of a stately regulator clock on the wall and the gentle hum of an old-fashioned radiator. Floor-to-ceiling shelves overflowed with law books, their leather spines cracked with age. It was a room built on precedent and patience, a fortress against the fast-talking. Spreadsheet-wielding world Leo and Chloe represented. Arthur was waiting for me, a pot of fresh coffee already brewing on a side table. He didn't seem surprised to see me, he just gestured to one of the deep leather armchairs facing his massive mahogany desk. I had a feeling you'd be stopping by. Elena, he said, his voice a comforting rumble. Coffee? I shook my head, too agitated to sit still. I paced in front of his desk, the journals and a ledger sheet clutched in my hand like evidence. Arthur, I need you to tell me what the Port Blossom Community Trust is. He leaned back in his chair, stipling his fingers, his gaze was steady, calm, but I could see a flicker of something in his eyes, caution. Maybe even sadness, that's a very specific question, it's a very specific expense. I countered, laying the ledger on his desk, one that's been draining the mill for decades. And Dad's journals, he kept writing these strange things, about stewardship, about the town's time being measured in generations. My voice faltered, saying it out loud, it sounded thin, desperate. He mentions you, right after one of the entries, he wrote. Leo will never understand that. What won't he understand, Arthur? Arthur was silent for a long moment, studying my face, the clock on the wall ticked off the seconds, each one stretching into an eternity. I knew about attorney-client privilege, I knew he was bound by his duty to my father, his client, but my father was gone. Your father was a complicated man, he said finally, his words chosen with surgical care. He loved you and Leo more than anything, but he also felt a profound duty to this town. He saw it as a living thing, something he was responsible for. But what does that have to do with this trust? I pressed, my frustration mounting, where did all that money go? He held up a hand, a gentle but firm gesture. I cannot discuss the specific legal instruments he put in place without his authorization. Elena, even now, my hands are tied. So that's it? I felt a surge of despair. You're just going to let Leo sell everything, knowing Dad had some kind of secret plan? I didn't say that, he leaned forward, his expression intent. I'm bound by the letter of his instructions, but you are not, your father left you more than just property, he left you a puzzle. He trusted you, and only you, to be able to solve it. My mind raced back to the journals, the odd, poetic phrases, the clock face sees all. I murmured, looking up at the regulator clock on his wall. Arthur's eyes followed my gaze, and a faint, almost imperceptible smile touched his lips. Your father loved this town's history, he spent his last years trying to preserve it. What was his final project? Elena, the one everyone thought was just a sentimental hobby? The answer came to me instantly, the clock tower, I breathe, the town hall clock tower. He was raising money to restore it. He wasn't just raising money. Arthur corrected softly, he was funding it, almost entirely, through the trust. He stood up and walked to the window, looking down at the town square, where the clock tower stood silent and weathered. Its hands frozen at a quarter past three. He believed that clock was the heart of this town, he said it was a promise, that as long as it was ticking, Port Blossom was still alive. He was a meticulous man. Your father, he kept records of everything, not just in his business ledgers. He turned back to face me, his eyes holding a new weight, a new meaning. You're looking for his will, Elena, but you're looking in the wrong place. The answers aren't in here, he said, gesturing around the book-filled office. They're out there, in his final project. I stared at him, my mind buzzing, it wasn't a direct answer, it was a riddle, a key. He was a gatekeeper, unable to open the door for me, but he had just pointed me directly at the lock. I wasn't leaving with the truth, but for the first time since Leo arrived, I was leaving with something better, a path. A surge of hope, fierce and bright, cut through the fog of my anxiety. My father hadn't abandoned me, he had left me a map. I left Arthur's office with a single destination in mind. The Port Blossom Town Hall stood in the center of the square. A proud, graying monument of stone and timber from a more prosperous era. Its clock tower, the one my father had loved, rose up against the bruised purple sky, its hands still frozen in time. For years, I had seen it as a symbol of our town's stagnation. Now, thanks to Arthur's riddle, it looked like a signpost. The inside of the building smelled of dusty records and lemon floor polish. My footsteps echoed in the cavernous main hall as I made my way to the town clerk's office. Beatrice Hemlock, a woman with a magnificent beehive of silver hair and glasses perched on the end of her nose, had been the town clerk since before I was born. She had processed my birth certificate and, just days ago, my father's death certificate. She looked up as I entered, her expression softening with sympathy. Elena, dear, I was so sorry about your father, a true pillar of this community. Thank you, Beatrice, I said, my voice steadier than I felt. I'm here about him. Actually, I need to see the town records for the Clock Tower Restoration Fund. Her eyebrows rose above the rim of her glasses. Goodness, that's a dusty one, your father's pet project, let me see what I can find. She disappeared into a back room, a labyrinth of filing cabinets and stacked archive boxes. I could hear her muttering to herself, the sounds of drawers opening and closing. She returned a few minutes later, blowing a fine layer of dust off a thin manila folder. Here we are, she said, not much to it, just a ledger of donations. I opened it on her counter, my eyes scanned the entries, and my heart sank a little. It was just a list of dates and amounts, all from the Port Blossom Community Trust. It was proof of the payments, but it explained nothing about their purpose. It was another dead end. My father was a meticulous man. Arthur had said, he kept records of everything. I thought of his journals, his office, the way he organized his tools in the workshop, each one in its proper place. He wouldn't have left a trail this faint. Beatrice, I began again, thinking out loud, Dad didn't just donate to the fund. Arthur said he was, managing it. Was there anything else, a charter, an account? Anything at all set up in his name related to the clock tower? She tapped a long, painted fingernail on her chin. In his name? No, dear, he was very clear the fund should be anonymous, managed through the trust. But, she paused, her eyes drifting toward the ceiling as she dredged up a memory. He did rent one of the old town hall safe deposit boxes. Years ago, it wasn't in his name, now that I think of it, it was in the name of the fund itself. He said it was for the historical documents, related to the restoration. My heart gave a jolt. Is it still here? As far as I know, no one's asked about it in a decade. She led me down a narrow flight of stairs into the town hall's basement. The air was cool and smelled of damp earth and aging paper. Against one wall was a bank of old, brass-plated safe deposit boxes, tarnished with age. Beatrice sorted through a ring of antique keys and stopped at a small, unassuming box near the bottom. Number forty-two, here we are, she said, handing me the key, I'll leave you to it. My hand trembled as I inserted the key. It turned with a stiff, grinding noise. I pulled open the small metal door. The box inside wasn't full of cash or stock certificates. It held a single, thick, leather-bound folder, tied with a faded red ribbon. I lifted it out, it was heavy, substantial, I carried it back upstairs to the clerk's office. My footsteps echoing with a new urgency. I sat at an empty table under the tall, grimy windows of the hall and untied the ribbon. The first page was a formal letter from Arthur's law firm, establishing the Port Blossom Community Trust. I scanned the dense legal text, my eyes searching for the purpose, the reason, and then I found it. On page three, under a section titled Article Four, the Stewardship Clause. The words seemed to lift off the page, charged with a power that took my breath away. The lands and operational assets of Ramirez Timber shall be held in stewardship for the permanent benefit of the Port Blossom community. Said assets may not be sold, transferred, or otherwise conveyed to any external, non-local corporate entity whose primary purpose is commercial development unrelated to the timber and artisan crafts industry. The primary directive of this trust is to ensure stable, long-term employment for the residents of Port Blossom. Preserving the town's character and self-sufficiency for future generations. A current of electricity shot through me, chasing away the cold fog of doubt that Leo had so carefully planted. I read the clause again, and then a third time. The cryptic journal entries suddenly blazed with clarity. Stewardship is a heavier wood than ownership. This document wasn't just a will, it was a shield, a promise forged in legal steel. My father hadn't been a sentimental fool running a failing business. He had been a guardian, a secret architect, siphoning off the mill's profits not out of poor management, but as a deliberate, brilliant act of preservation. He had legally bound his legacy to the fate of the town he loved. The document in my hands was heavier than paper, it was an anchor, a shield, a sword. I looked out the window at the silent clock tower, its hands were frozen, but for the first time since my father died, I knew I had the power to start time again. The night of the town hall meeting, a storm rolled in from the coast, matching the turbulent mood of Port Blossom. The auditorium was packed, every squeaking wooden chair filled. It felt like the entire town was holding its breath under one roof. The air was heavy with the smell of rain-damp coats and simmering anxiety. I stood at the back with Arthur, the leather-bound trust document feeling like a heavy shield in my hands. We weren't just here for a meeting, we were here for a reckoning. On the brightly lit stage, Leo and Chloe were a vision of sleek, corporate confidence. A projector screen behind them glowed with a glossy logo, the Port Blossom Palisades. Chloe, poised and articulate, commanded the stage, her voice smooth as she painted a picture of a glittering future. We're not talking about erasure, she said, her arms open in a gesture of benevolent inclusion. We're talking about evolution, a strategic pivot that will honor this town's past while building a prosperous future. The screen flashed with architectural renderings of glass and cedar cabins, infinity pools overlooking the river, and happy, diverse families hiking on pristine trails. It was a beautiful lie, it was our forest, our river, but with all of our people edited out. Then it was Leo's turn, he stepped up to the microphone, playing the part of the prodigal son. He spoke of his love for his hometown, the bittersweet nostalgia, the pain of seeing it struggle. He framed the sale not as an abandonment, but as an act of salvation. Delivered by the one who had been smart enough to leave and successful enough to return with a solution. My father loved this town, Leo said, his voice thick with practiced emotion. But he was a realist, and I know, in my heart, that he would want us to seize this incredible opportunity to secure Port Blossom's future for the next hundred years. I could feel the room shifting. I saw the desperate hope in the eyes of some of the younger I could feel the room shifting I saw the desperate hope in the eyes of some of the younger loggers who had been out of work for months I saw the weary resignation on the faces of the shop owners on main street leo and chloe were selling a fantasy and some people were so desperate they were willing to buy it mayor thompson a man who always favored the path of least resistance was nodding along his expression one of relief the battle was almost lost before it had even begun so I'd like to ask for an informal show of hands leo concluded his smile radiating confidence a vote of confidence to show the council that we as a community are ready to embrace progress as hands hesitant but hopeful began to rise across the auditorium I knew it was time this entire presentation my voice rang out from the back clear and steady cutting through the tense silence is based on a lie every head in the room turned a wave of murmurs rippled through the crowd I saw leo's face tighten his confident smile faltering for the first time chloe's eyes narrowed into slits of pure ice flanked by arthur I began to walk down the center aisle the weight of every gaze on me it wasn't a walk of shame it was a march ellie this is not the time or the place leo said into the microphone his voice straining to sound reasonable but the irritation was unmistakable this is a community meeting not a family squabble you made it a community matter when you decided to sell their livelihoods leo I said stopping at the foot of the stage I held up the leather bound folder you talk about our father's legacy this this is his legacy chloe stepped forward the picture of professional condescension ma'am with all due respect the town council has seen the will the ownership is clear you've seen a will arthur vance's voice boomed beside me carrying the authority of fifty years of practicing law in this town but you haven't seen the governing document I opened the folder and turned to face the townspeople my real audience my father was a quiet man I began my voice filled with an emotion that was no longer just anger but a fierce protective pride he didn't make grand speeches but he made plans he saw what was happening to small towns like ours saw how outside corporations could come in strip them of their resources and leave a hollow shell behind and he decided years ago that would never happen to port blossom I looked directly at the front row at hank and the other mill workers he set up a trust a legal shield to protect this town and in that trust he wrote a clause he called it the stewardship clause I held the document high my hands steady and I read the words that had become my creed the lands and operational assets of ramirez timber shall be held in stewardship for the permanent benefit of the port blossom community said assets may not be sold transferred or otherwise conveyed to any external non-local corporate entity I didn't have to finish a gasp went through the room followed by a rising tide of furious excited chatter leo's face had gone completely pale he looked like a man who had just watched his winning lottery ticket burst into flames this is ridiculous he stammered grabbing the microphone this is this is fake some sentimental nonsense it's not legally binding that's when arthur stepped forward he stood beside me a pillar of quiet integrity I can assure you all he said his voice resonating with unimpeachable authority that the port blossom community trust is very real and this clause is ironclad I know this because I drafted it with mister ramirez myself nearly twenty years ago the finality in his tone was absolute the room erupted the murmurs became a roar of outrage of relief of fury all of it directed at the two figures on the stage but the most potent reaction came from chloe her professional mask didn't just crack it shattered she turned on leo her eyes blazing with a rage that had nothing to do with the town and everything to do with her deal you didn't know she hissed her voice a venomous whisper that somehow carried through the noise you built this entire multimillion dollar proposal around an asset you don't even control you never did your due diligence leo stood there speechless exposed in front of everyone he grew up with as not just a traitor but a fool the slick city suit couldn't hide the panicked cornered look of the boy I remembered from the playground mayor thompson seeing the tide turn so decisively banged his gavel this proposal he declared his voice trembling slightly is clearly founded on a catastrophic misunderstanding of ownership it is hereby null and void a wave of applause and cheers washed over me I saw hank in the front row his weathered face split by a wide grin giving me a slow profound nod of respect I wasn't a victor I was just a daughter who had read her father's last letter and understood his final wish I looked past the chaos on the stage out the tall auditorium window to where the clock tower stood silhouetted against the stormy sky my father's promise had been kept his time the town's time could begin again the auditorium emptied out slowly the angry roar softening into a charged buzz of conversation people didn't celebrate so much as they collectively exhaled the tension of months of uncertainty finally released they clapped me on the shoulder as I passed their faces etched with a gratitude that was both humbling and heavy I didn't see leo or chloe leave they simply vanished from the stage swallowed by the shadows at the side exit a hasty and humiliating retreat they didn't have to be told they were no longer welcome the silent stony judgment of a thousand gazes had been enough when I got back to the house the front door was wide open a sleek leather suitcase stood in the entryway and I could hear cold clipped voices coming from the living room chloe was moving with a furious efficient energy snatching a laptop and a designer handbag from the side table leo stood watching her his expensive suit looking rumpled and defeated this is a public humiliation leo chloe was saying her voice a low controlled blade of fury my firm's reputation my reputation is now attached to the single most incompetent due diligence failure I have ever seen I don't partner with fools chloe please leo begged his voice cracking we can fix this we can find a loophole arthur is an old man she laughed a sharp ugly sound devoid of any humor a loophole the game is over your father outplayed you from the grave he put his faith in this town in his daughter he knew exactly who you were and he built a fortress around his legacy to protect it from you she zipped her suitcase with a violent tug I'm a developer I build on solid foundations and you leo are nothing but a sinkhole he reached for her arm but she recoiled as if from a snake don't touch me she walked past him without a backward glance her heels clicking an angry staccato on the hardwood floor I stepped back into the shadows of the hallway as she passed her face a mask of cold rage a moment later I heard the throaty growl of the tesla's engine the crunch of tires spitting gravel on the driveway and then silence he had lost it all in one night the deal his reputation and the future he had been so willing to sacrifices for I found him standing alone in the living room staring up at the portrait of our father that hung over the fireplace he looked smaller diminished the slick city confidence stripped away leaving only a raw hollowed out despair he didn't seem to notice me until I was standing beside him for a long time neither of us spoke the only sound was the ticking of the grandfather clock and the drumming of the rain was it worth it leo I finally asked my voice quiet not accusatory just weary he flinched his gaze still fixed on our father's painted face he never believed in me he whispered the words choked with a bitterness that was years in the making he always saw me as a screw up this whole thing this ridiculous trust it was a test his final test and he designed it so I would fail you're wrong I said softly it wasn't a test it was a gift just not the one you wanted I finally understood the full depth of our father's plan he didn't want to give you a cash prize leo he wanted to give you a responsibility a legacy he knew the mill wasn't just a pile of assets to be liquidated he knew it was the heart of this town stewardship he called it he wanted you to be a steward and the first thing you did was try to sell it for parts he finally turned to look at me his eyes shining with unshed tears of shame and rage you don't get it ellie you never have you stayed here in this this museum of a town you never had to compete in my world you're either growing or you're dying you have to be ruthless I was drowning in debt I was trying to keep up with people who started the race halfway to the finish line I just I just wanted one win just one big win to show him to show everyone that I was worth something the confession hung in the air between us raw and pathetic and in that moment I didn't feel triumph I didn't feel the satisfaction of revenge I just felt an immense overwhelming sadness pity for the brother who saw our fathers love as a burden and his legacy as a cage sadness for the man who was so desperate to prove his worth that he was willing to destroy his own home to do it he sank into an armchair covering his face with his hands his shoulders shaking with silent sobs the battle was over there was nothing left to fight about the gulf between our worlds our values our understanding of the man who had raised us was simply too vast to bridge I turned and walked out of the room leaving him alone with the ghosts of his ambition it didn't feel like a victory it felt like the aftermath of an earthquake the profound silence after the shaking stops we had saved the mill we had saved the town but I wasn't sure if there was anything left to save between my brother and me six months passed the relentless winter rains gave way to a soft oregon spring that painted the hillsides in a thousand shades of green the air once heavy with uncertainty now smelled of damp earth fresh cut lumber and possibility the quiet in our house was no longer a tense suffocating thing it was a peaceful emptiness a space cleared for something new to grow leo was gone he left the morning after our final conversation his tesla a silent ghost slipping out of town before sunrise two weeks later a letter arrived with a chicago postmark there were no excuses no pleas for forgiveness it was just a few short clipped sentences he had sold his shares in the mill to me for a symbolic dollar he wrote that he was taking a junior position at a firm in the midwest a job he could have gotten straight out of college maybe dad was right the letter concluded some things are heavier than money I hope you can carry it it wasn't an apology but it was an admission it was the sound of a man finally hitting bottom the mill didn't roar back to life overnight it began with a hum I didn't have the capital for a massive overhaul but I had something better the trust and talent of the crew we gathered around the big workbench in my father's office not as a boss and her employees but as partners hank with his decades of experience sketched out a plan to retool our oldest saw to be more efficient maria whose husband had been laid off from the cannery proposed a new side business using our wood scraps to make artisan furniture and cutting boards to sell at the portland markets we were forming a worker owned cooperative the idea once a radical whisper was now our blueprint for survival every decision was debated every success and failure shared for the first time the future of ramirez timber wasn't resting on the shoulders of one person but was held up by the strong capable hands of many we weren't just a business we were a community rebuilding ourselves from the inside out slowly almost imperceptibly at first the town began to breathe again a new coat of paint appeared on the diner the bookstore on main street which had been threatening to close now had a sign in the window advertising a local author night we weren't a boomtown and we never would be but we were no longer a ghost town either we were a town that had looked over the edge and decided to step back the day the clock tower was finally restored the whole town gathered in the square the old brass bell polished to a gleam was visible in the bell free the new clock face a perfect replica of the original shown in the afternoon sun I stood near the back with arthur watching as mayor thompson prepared to give a speech arthur leaned over his eyes twinkling your father would have been proud elena he murmured not just of what you saved but of what you're building I thought of the man in the portrait the man who had planned all this with a quiet stubborn faith in the goodness of his home I finally understood that his legacy wasn't the mill itself but the resilience it was meant to inspire the mayor finished his speech and a reverend hush fell over the crowd a young engineer hired with funds from the trust gave a signal a low whirring sound came from the tower the sound of gears engaging for the first time in a generation the long elegant minute hand began to move ticking past the roman numerals with a satisfying click and then the hour struck a deep resonant chime rolled out across the square echoing off the hillsides it was a sound no one under the age of forty had ever heard before it wasn't just the sound of a clock it was the sound of a heartbeat strong and steady returning to the body of the town as the bell chimed I didn't feel the triumph of victory or the satisfaction of revenge I felt a profound sense of peace the fight hadn't been against leo it had been for this for this moment for this feeling of shared hope for the simple sturdy promise that we were still here and that our time was just beginning the stewardship my father had passed on was no longer a burden to be carried but a mantle to be worn light and full of purpose and as I stood there surrounded by my neighbors my partners my town I knew we were ready to build our own future one ticking second at a time at its heart alina's story is a powerful reflection on a question many of us face in our own lives what is the true measure of value we live in a world that often screams that value is a number on a spreadsheet a quick profit or the easy way out we're constantly told to unlock the potential of our assets whether that's a home a career or even a relationship often by liquidating them for something new and shiny leo represented that voice the one that tells us to be smart and ruthless by cutting ties with the past for a promise of a more profitable future but alina's journey reminds us of a deeper more enduring truth it shows that the most profound value isn't found in what we own but in what we choose to be a steward of true legacy isn't the fortune we cash out but the foundation we preserve for others her fight for the mill was a fight for the idea that community responsibility and shared history are assets that can't be measured in dollars it's a testament to the quiet often thankless strength it takes to rebuild rather than sell to nurture rather than abandon all of us have a port blossom in our lives a principle a family tradition a local place or a difficult responsibility that the world tells us is outdated or worthless this story is a reminder that protecting it might just be the most valuable work we ever do we would be honored to hear about the legacy you're fighting for in your own life please share your story in the comments below take good care of yourselves and each other